We'll go ahead and call the special city council and the common council or county council meeting to order. Luke, I'll let you do your thing.
Oh, council, county council meeting is now called to order as well?
Okay, we're going to start off with a roll call for city council members present and then Luke will follow then for county side. So Larry, here, okay? Phillip, you here? Julie is not here, but she did say she would be showing up. Gary and John.
Right.
All right. Ballmeister?
Here.
Boland?
Here.
Achen?
Present.
Bulkerson?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Anne Williams?
Here.
All right. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Council, do you see any changes or addition to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion made by John Deere, second.
I'll second that.
Second by Phillip. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda stands approved.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries, agenda is adopted.
All right. Thank you all for joining us today. We'll try to keep this somewhat short, but it is lengthy. I appreciate everybody coming out to get educated, to have an understanding of where we're coming from, and I'm sure where the county's coming from. We're looking for a nice solution and just a fair shake. There's no negativity towards anybody or what they've done or haven't done. We're just asking for a fair shake at the end of the day. So I'm going to have you all turn your attention to the projector. I know the chairs aren't quite that way, so it's the best I can do. So we'll go ahead and get started. This is the Tell City 2021 Central Dispatch Costs and Services Review. These costs are actually from the 2020, so I'm going to let Roger kind of talk about the first few slides, and as we get into the financials, I'll take on that. So Roger, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Roger Shannon, I'm with the Tell City Police Department. I'm the Assistant Chief of Police. My primary duty is dispatch supervision. I oversee the dispatchers. I have eight full-time, eight part-time emergency dispatchers. They're all certified and two nine one ones.
Hey Roger, try to talk really loud so three recorders hear you.
Is this working?
I don't think it is.
Okay, I think it is.
Okay, just talk really loud.
Basically, if you oversee the dispatch operations and make sure that the training's up to date, scheduling, everything of that nature, anything that goes into the supervision of the dispatch center falls upon me. Chief Low Allen handles pretty much the patrol division. My part of this is going to be very short. I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of a couple of terms you'll see tonight. The first one you're looking at right there is a PSAP. Basically, you see there is Public Safety Answering Point. There is a couple of highlights that I want to point out to this Public Safety Answering Point. Your PSAP is located at the Tell City Police Department. When 911 calls and it's picked up by a dispatcher for a 911 emergency, that call goes directly to the Tell City Police Department. And it's been that way for several years. I started in 2005, shortly thereafter, I became a dispatcher myself, certified, answer those calls along with the other employees we have. Basically, what happens is if we are tied up, we have rollover lines, so we would have a secondary PSAP. That secondary PSAP would be Spencer County, Indiana. Keep in mind, by state statute, if the public safety answering point that is manned 24/7 by certified operators, the line can ring anywhere else in Perry County, but it can only be picked up by a certified operator. If our rollover lines are busy when we get 911 calls, they come in multiple calls, okay? So with rollover lines, they have a secondary PSAP, Spencer County, Indiana. Trouble, problems, we flip the switch in the back, we roll those calls automatically to Spencer County, Indiana. That place is just like ours. They are the PSAP, 24/7, it's that, okay? The primary function, again, is to receive incoming requests for emergency assistance and relay those requests to the appropriate responding public safety agencies. Now, how dispatchers do their job, how they put the emergency calls out, there's various ways, okay? We think of it as simple radio communication. Sometimes it goes a little different. We have two means of communication, we have 800 radios, we have a repeater system. Sometimes things are dispatched by cellphone. There's multiple ways to get dispatched and get called and get help out to the responders or other people that need assistance to get the information out to the responders. Okay, man. Basically, what this is, Section 32 here, and this is all continuing state statute. This talks about the statewide, for you guys, ladies and gentlemen, who don't know what it is, statewide 911 fees. That's the phone tax you see on your telephone. Right now, you're at a dollar, everybody has a phone, you pay a dollar. All Perry County residents contribute to that. Tell City, Troy, County Residence, Hamilton, no one's left out. That tax goes to the state of Indiana, okay? The main purpose of that tax is to fund the PSAP center. The executive director, when I spoke to him directly, he told me in his own words, and I quote, "This is a little bit of money, so slowly, of the cost of operating the PSAP." He further told me that the funds alone collected from those fees and distributed back to the county would not cover 40% of the operating cost of the PSAP in Indiana. So keep that in mind. By default, these statewide 911 fees, the funds collected at state level, everyone taxes, goes to Perry County by default, okay? It is used to fund the PSAP. That is its primary use in Indiana. There's two types of distributions in the funds from the state. Hold harmless distribution, this is guaranteed funding. All this could do is basically, we could grow based on our population. This amount could increase, but as we know it right now, and as it stands, if I gave you a number that we received in 2020, they're about $283,000. If I gave you that number right now, I can tell you that that's guaranteed funding, and they refer to it as the hold harmless. They distribute that in monthly increments to the county. Again, they fund the PSAP. The second type of distribution is called a 90/10 split. And as you can see there, it's based on 90% of the population and 10% equal share. After the board takes their final calls at the end of the fiscal year, each county will receive an extra distribution called the 90/10 split. This is not a guaranteed amount. It's been the same that I've seen for the past few years, they're about. I can give you a number of approximately $61,000 received to the county last year at the end of fiscal year. That was in addition to the 283,000. So we're up to about $345,000 that was sent back to the county to fund the PSAP. Now with these funds, the state is going to have say. They're going to say, hey, we're going to give you this money back, but we're going to make sure through audits and reviews that this money's being spent to fund the PSAP. Indeed, eligible expenses, county, sorry, the state lays it out. Anything that you have questions about, you're welcome to reach out to the 911 board. They'll tell you if it's an eligible expense, but they lay it out in plain language here, that you can pretty much see. It covers everything that would be involved in operating a PSAP, all the way down to communications to paint on the wall, okay? Anything that revolves around that PSAP and funding for that PSAP would pretty much be an eligible spend. But with me saying that, keep in mind what is considered a PSAP. Just goes through, if you all can read, I'm not going to read word for word, slide for slide, but it goes from internet to hardware to computers to phones and everything that we would need, mapping systems, everything that we would need, again, to operate this 911 center and operate it efficiently and stay up to date with technology and everything that is out there right now that can make us provide the best possible service to Perry County that we can. And keep in mind, being a PSAP, we dispatch for every agency in Perry County, from ambulance to volunteer fire to rescue. If you think of an emergency service, that call comes to Tell City Police Department. That's where it goes first before it's ever given to anybody, all of Perry County. Again, some more eligible expenses. You are welcome to look this up. It's public information on the statewide 911 board website. Just Google statewide Indiana 911, you can see all of the eligible expenses. One of them I do want to highlight here, excuse me, is personnel expenses. I think that's very important. It can be used for salaries, but you've got to be, you've got to read into how that the state says you must be able to use this for salaries. You can't task somebody with just a duty of a 911 call or a 911 center and give them a job description and pay their salary out of it. Their primary responsibility per state statute has to be receiving, processing, and dispatching 911 calls. That takes a certified individual to do that. They would be eligible for payroll out of 911 funds. Or the management and coordination of those services, which would be myself or Chief Low Allen who oversee the operation. Some of our salary, if need be, could be paid out of 911. But mainly, the primary job responsibilities are for those answering and dispatching the 911 calls. And I hope I'm not confusing any one, but that was the only thing really I wanted to point out in the eligible expenses was the payroll portion, so it's very important how it can be paid out. Just eligible expenses continued, you can see there, just equipment, radio equipment. Think about a dispatch center. If you've never been in our dispatch center, I invite you to come down and take a look at it. Anything that you can think of to do with emergency services being dispatched from a PSAP would be an eligible expense from the statewide 911 funds that's being distributed to the county.
Okay, that's all your part. Any questions for Roger before he sits down?
Just a quick one, ma'am.
Yes.
Reminder, your mention of Spencer County as backup.
Yes, sir.
Just that, who operates the Spencer County dispatch?
As far as the coordinator?
I mean, what unit of government operates?
It's the county.
The county operates it?
Yeah.
Sheriff's Department or?
It's the county as far as I know, right?
It's a separate, it's Kim Fisher, she's the 911 director.
Okay, but it's operated by the county. You know, just claiming that it's operated by the county, and you know, but that's a good question, because we're kind of unique here, that the city operates the PSAP generally. And that's why by default, these funds go back to the county, because we're only probably one of two in the state of Indiana where the city runs the dispatch.
So it's physically located where?
Rockport?
Yep.
At the Sheriff's Department?
At the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, sir. You have a question?
All right, thank you, Roger. So this kind of becomes my part of the presentation. It kind of goes into some numbers and things that Roger went into a little bit, expands on it. Tell City Police Department, or excuse me, Tell City Dispatches has eight full-time dispatchers, eight part-time, and the two admins would be Chief Low Allen and Assistant Chief Roger Smith. Roger pretty much handles a lot, Chief does a lot with dispatch, but Roger does a lot of the scheduling. Roger, what else besides that?
Just troubleshooting the callouts, you know, for dispatchers that they call me in, anything that goes down 911, I'd ask, anything that goes down that would require my attention or to reach the right person to correct that problem, we're going to be contacted 24/7.
Okay, and then if you notice on the right side of the screen there, the City of Tell City Investments and Dispatch, these are just some larger numbers that we've invested in over the last few years, was the Interact System in 2015 was $110,000, and just recently in 2020, we invested $70,000. This came out of our own funds. There was no funds from the county given towards this. It was 100% Tell City funds, Carers Funds, General Fund, et cetera. So these were our funds. This does not include other funds, you know, Chief, you were saying we had Ek Monday out there last year, year before last, spending how much, you think?
We had a server replaced, just a server alone, with a green, just to fix that. So it's always some kind of an expense associated with the operations.
And you won't see a lot of these costs in these next several slides. That's just, these are costs that you're going to see a lot of, is what I would call reoccurring costs. Okay, salaries. This is a little confusing, so I'm going to try to break it down, but if you look at the top part, that is our dispatcher's salaries. The eight full-time and the part-time is included in that. Total payroll cost for 2020 was $713,382. What we were going to put in the 2022 agreement is an additional $50,000 that would help cover Chief Low Allen's and Assistant Chief Roger Smith, since they are the two that are running things when it comes to that. So that would actually be 763, but don't focus on the 763 number at this point, because that's for 2022, and we're actually focused on the 2020 numbers. So just don't focus too much on that. So these are the cost breakdown. This is Tell City's cost and Perry County's cost, and I'll break them down. Tell City's administrative cost, and that's why both city and county councils have these here. The pink is Tell City's, the green is the county's with Tell City's added to it. So that's the difference in the colors. So what happens is Connie's office prepares this, what's this pink paper here, it's actually, it's on white, and gives it to the county, and then they combine it together to actually submit this one form to the state of Indiana that they sign and submit. So the cost is administrative cost, which is, again, that's salary, the 713. Other admitted cost is $9,344. Building and grounds, $19,329. Insurance, $3,000. Generator costs, $680. Communication costs, $46,571. Miscellaneous is $114. Now I want to clarify something that is confusing. On the county's report, the green one, on the very back page where it says, "Other funding sources, $114,000," that is actually paid by the City of Tell City. The county does not pay that, and that is not reflected in our report that we submit to the county. So just keep that in mind. So when you see that number, it's confusing to lose that number going back documents, but that is 100% Tell City's cost, and that is the building bonds. So the total cost for dispatch, what was spent, was $906,341.79, and I'll go into more of this later. So let's look at the county's costs. Administrative costs, personnel, $22,174. Administrative, other, $21,790. Buildings and grounds, $8,300. Insurance, zero. Generator, $1,800. Data processing, $16,400. Communications, $85,242. Operations, $6,900. Radio infrastructure, $18,701. And the miscellaneous, $3,650. And again, that is, that number is a little different when you look at these pink and green sheets on the miscellaneous, because I had to subtract those two numbers out. Breaking down the county's costs and what they pay out of things. So that $22,000 is paid out of state 911 funds. The building and grounds, excuse me, the administration personnel is $22,174. That's paid out of state 911. Administrative is paid out of the 911. Building and grounds is the general.
Can I pause you on that line item there, just to make it clear, to make sure that everybody understands. Administrative costs there is two pieces. One is training certification for dispatchers that you pay to the dispatch services, and the other one is $18,300. That's actually what we pay for the emergency notification system. So administrative costs there is a little, I just want to make sure we understand what those are.
These are off, these are directly lined after, yeah, directly lined off that, exactly.
The 21, 79.
Yeah, it's just, and that's where everybody can, you guys can break it down and follow it. I didn't.
I know, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
It seems really strange, that number right there.
Yeah, but it's just, it's there. You've got to do your homework on that. So building and grounds comes out of general, $8,300. Like I said, zero insurance, generator, $1,800, comes out of general. Data processing, communications, operations, radial, those come out of your state 911, except for radio infrastructure actually comes out of both general and state 911 to get that $18,000 there. And the miscellaneous, the $3,650. So total cost at a general fund for the county for dispatch is $21,452. Out of state 911 funds, $163,512.16.
But that $163 does not include their local.
Right. The 163, Connie made a good point. The 163 does not include the $122,000 that comes out of the interlocal agreement, which would be the 283 that they received. So Tell City's cost, Perry County's cost, this is the total cost that Steve submits to the state for dispatch. $1,091,305.7. There's these interlocal agreements. This is who contributes to interlocal agreements. These are your 2021 numbers. So this is what will be paid to the city on the 2021 agreements, not to 2020. Tell City Electric pays $6,500. Tell City Water, $1,000. Tell City Waste Water, $1,000. You may be asking, why are they contributing to the state, to our dispatches? Because after Tell City Electric closes, those calls are redirected to our, basically, dispatch, the call-in line, the, what's that number? I don't even know the phone number, it's that awful. There you go, 7068 line. So that's where they come in. Perry County Memorial Hospital, $29,154. Perry County as a whole, $171,689. 122 of that is the state 911, and then the public safety, $49,000. That gets their grand total that they commit for the 171. Hamilton, $25,000.915. Troy, $6,478 for a grand total of $241,738.25. So go up to the right there, you'll see the total dispatch cost at Tell City, and you want to subtract that. The balance left for the City of Tell City to cover out of our funds, $664,603.55. That's what the City of Tell City residents are paying out of our tax dollars, our general fund, to cover this cost. That's a huge number. And again, all we're asking for at the end of the day is not to make anybody mad, we're just asking for our fair shake. That's what's right for our residents to not cover this complete cost. All right. This is kind of breaking down suggested funding. This is suggesting. Don't go out and say, this is exactly what the mayor says you have to pay. This is suggesting. You'll see the state 911 funds, $283,000, and you can add those up. That comes to $302,220. So you would subtract that from the 911 cost, and you have the remaining balance of $789,076.86. That would be distributed equally based off population, because state 911 funds are based off population. That's how they are distributed down to the county, and that's how low it's done. So you could, we could do it off calls, but I think you're not comparing apples to apples when you do it that way. I think this is a fairer way. So that's basically where we're at. 38% for Tell City, 7% for Hamilton, 2% for Troy, and 53% for the county. Now, those numbers could change. We have a census report that I thought we would have by now. We don't have it, but when we get it, I think we, the fair thing to do would be to adjust those numbers accordingly.
It'll be released in July.
July now, okay. Was May, now it's July. Well, maybe this year.
I think it's July.
So those numbers can be figured off that. And the reason I take that 283, because there's county costs out there, and you want to take that right out too. I mean, we're just coming up with numbers here. I'm not saying this is the go-to everything. This is a discussion point. Chief, Roger, did I miss anything?
I don't think so. I think you covered it.
I went fast. Council members, both county and city, questions?
Yeah, I'd like to know, if you have statistics on, how many calls come in from the county, how many come in from Tell City, how many come in from town?
That's, we can get you that, Erla. Roger, can you have, can you get Erla that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. He calls her by, yes, sir, so don't be offended. Any other questions from either council groups? Everybody's quiet. Okay. Luke, I'm going to kind of turn it over to you to talk to your council. So Luke, you have the floor.
So counsel, do you have any questions or discussion points that you want to bring up at this time?
The only thing is, the information, Erla, gets undivided. Every member gets that.
Yeah, no, we can do that, yeah.
I wanted that same information.
Well, we will definitely get that. This is solely an informational meeting, open discussion, so any requests, you have information, please make it now, or you can do it at a later time as well, but it's just an informational meeting only. And I guess my question is, so right now, the county uses statewide 911 funds to pay for other things, such as we pay a lease payment, we pay other things out of that statewide 911 fund. So if you did take over, if you do take all the 911 funds, you would have to absorb all those other costs, correct?
We understand that, yep.
But can I interject? I think the numbers that he shows includes those costs. So I think what you're showing is right in the sense of mathematics, you know.
It's 100% right.
The numbers, the 160 that we're, you know, using to pay for the 911 service, that's in there. So that's, these are right there. So these numbers are pretty, you know, accurate in that sense.
I will interject one thing, and I did not touch on the 90/10 split, and I need to bring that up. Roger did bring up the 90/10 split. Those funds are not included in any of this. None of that is included. That $61,000 was last year, I think, Roger, somewhere in that number, just throwing one out there. Where the, how those funds are spent either to reduce everybody's contribution, or for radios, or for equipment that needs to be repaired, such as repeaters, or routers, or servers, or whatever, that can all be discussed. That's total day, different discussion, because that's a total different number.
Can I say, Connie, all that too, in my, I don't know what you're seeing now. Anyway, those funds, I think, the way that we do them now is, and I'll do air quotes, because it's not really a rainy fund, it's an excess fund, but basically if something dramatic happens, like with the radio system or whatever, or like you have something dry at the dispatch, we could actually use those funds to take care of that. I think, I think in the contract language, right now, there's not a very clear path on how those decisions are made. I think the contract needs to be pulled up in the sense to make sure that we know what that path is, and how requests are made, how they're approved, and due approvals, and that kind of stuff. There are some state laws around that, but I think you could some of that in contract.
You know, and just while you're talking about that, you could take the $60,000 and set $30,000 back, or, excuse me, 50%, which would be $30,000. The other $30,000 could be distributed out based off these 38%, 7%, 2%, 53% for equipment, radios, and so forth for the entities. Could be done, but.
And also, I think you have to watch the balance of that excess fund that gets transferred out.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
You need to take some of that out.
Well.
And whatever this is.
And you could do that, or honestly, continued improvements to dispatch. You know, it was 20 years before we had any updates to it last time, really, as far as the equipment, the counters, the desks, the chairs, furniture, a lot of that. And you got to keep in mind, dispatch ain't just open from, you know, 8 to 5. It's 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We've got two people out there now that know a lot about dispatch, and they know how hard it is, and how long they sit out there every day, and they don't leave. They get up to the bathroom, grab something to eat, maybe, but they don't even leave those rooms hardly for 12 hours. They're locked in a box. And I have to thank you all for everything you all do. And I hope nobody at dispatch from the city side, and I don't want to speak for Loof, but the county side thinks this is an attack on dispatch at all. It's not. It's trying to understand our numbers and work together. So I hope, no one thinks that.
And that's what this is at the end of the day. It's a numbers thing, and in reality, it's the county's responsibility to ensure that there's a functioning PSAP. So whatever we need to do to work together to make that happen, it has to happen. We don't have a choice. But we need to make sure it's fair, and everyone has a chance to, you know, chime into that discussion, and we can reach a solution that's realistic and that can be achieved. And that's what's important.
Yeah, you know, you just got to make sure everybody's putting what their, I don't know, their personal feelings, I guess, is a better, aside, to come up with a solution and not, you know, try to, you know, he said, she said, whatever. The numbers are, they're here, they don't lie. They are, they're facts, 100%. And this is, this is good for discussion. I can't answer why this wasn't done in previous years. Again, that's bar on the bridge. We're moving forward, the Kansman kicked us. We're going to address it now and be done with it. So moving forward, this isn't a problem for any other administratives. So.
And I call.
We've got to remember that in history, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
We've got to remember in history that for 30 years, we've had great success. That's the only thing that we've got to remember. Everything else is water on the bridge. We can fix it and go forward. But we've had 30 years of this, and it's been great. I mean, this is the value, this is the reason between the two of us. Sorry, but.
Oh, you're good. I call this meeting, and Mayor agreed to it, because this is information that needs to be public, and everyone needs to be aware of the situation. And I know the council is the fiscal body. We don't sign the agreement, but it's important that the council is aware so we can make the correct financing decision. So that's what this meeting's all about. It's just seeing the numbers. It's really nothing more than that. But I do agree with Greg that the contract, that our interlocal agreement's very thin. It's like two pages worth of wording and then an exhibit. I've asked for neighboring. I've asked for neighboring counties, their interlocal agreements, like Monroe County, they partner with Bloomington, and they have a county-city agreement, and it's about 12 pages long. And it hits on every single issue that could pop up, it's there. And it's clear, the accounting's clear, everything is much clearer in that agreement. So although it's not the council's responsibility to make the agreement, but I agree that there needs to be significant changes to the wording of our interlocal agreement as well, on top of the financing of it.
And if some, if any of you out there, residents, council, I will send this to you automatically. Luke, I'll send you this PowerPoint.
Yeah, I'll send it.
So you can send it out to the council commissioners, this is, I'm not asking anybody if they have any public access records for it. If you want it, it's yours, you just give me your email, I'll send it to you tomorrow. So you'll, you'll get it. So before you leave, if you want it, get with me or Connie, whoever, one of us two, and we'll make sure we email to anybody that wants access to this, to look at these numbers. These pink sheets and green ones, if somebody wants these, 100%, I'll give them to anybody. It's, this is a public record already, you know, for the county, and this is what we give them, the same thing. They're not, I only put them in color just because they look identical. You can't, when I was trying to figure this out, I picked up the wrong one six times, so, color coordinate. Well, you got to do what you got to do when something looks so similar. Luke, you want to ask some questions?
So I'd ask, does the council have any more questions as of now, Perry County Council? And I would say the next step for us is we have a council meeting on Thursday, and I'd like to appoint some council members to start beginning actual discussions with the city on this at that time, so we can get down to business.
Quick question, on the administration, where like Roger and Chief Lowallant, and you're wanting some of their funds to be absorbed in the 911. So are you looking at a percentage of their?
$25,000 each, basically, just kind of a number we came up with. It's not concrete, but I mean, I just know, I know what chief and assistant chief salaries are, and they're nowhere near, you know, that's, they're in the 50s.
I didn't know you took like a percentage of what you felt like they worked in that particular department.
And honestly, and I don't want to speak, Roger probably puts, I'm going to say more time in it, is that fair to say? Chief's going to turn and look at me like, spin the head around.
Chief handles the, we basically, we're in the two departments, and one is the way you can look at it. Chief handles the officers, and I supervise dispatch, that's the way it has to be with the two departments. One is somebody in charge.
Yeah, you can almost look at it and say that, you can take me out of that equation, because Roger's primary responsibility is the dispatch, and he spends more time with the dispatch than he does the officer side of things, so. That was a number that, that he kind of, when we were discussing that here, that, depending on how you want to look at it, I mean, that doesn't even cover his salary alone, or right at his salary, it would be, so. So, yeah, I mean, that's, he's spending a lot more time than I do.
And that number's also could be contingent on responsibilities the city may take over from the county. You know, I mean, if we're going to do 100% of this 911, we're responsible for the repeaters and everything else, then that, that's a very fair salary, if you want to know the truth, for assistant chief there, so. Larry?
Mayor, but those figures, you've got a notation at the bottom, those figures that are laid out there, does not include anybody.
Correct. They would actually, they would, that 50,000 would actually have to be divided up amongst those as well. And I didn't put those in there, because I was really trying to keep it focused on 2021 numbers primarily. It's, it's. Tough to do in some ways, but, yeah. Do you want to ask any public questions?
So does anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Sure, Kelly.
How much do we have in this excess fund that's sitting here?
It's, on the 2020 report, it was $150,000.
You'll find that on the back of the green report there. Oh, I'll, you're welcome to, I'm sorry, I assumed everybody had it, but it did.
So, I'm a Tell City taxpayer, so this is very concerning to me, that we've been carrying this, the bulk of the, you know, what was it, I forgot what you said. I don't know, I'm glad that you're having this conversation. I don't see why we've got $150,000 sitting in an account left over when Tell City's out, $700,000 every year. That doesn't make any sense to me. The statewide 911 funds, you say everybody pays those on their cell phone bill?
Our landline.
Our landline. Our landline. Our landline too. Okay, well. So, is that what you're saying, that should come right off the top of the total cost? Because that's everybody, that's not just the county, that's not.
Comes off the total cost of the expense of, to operate 911. Which would, which would be like, you could even say the repeater tower that's out in the county somewhere that repeats the signal, I mean, that's part of it. You can't operate without the tower that's going to relay the signal, that's part of it. It's the whole ball of wax.
Or did I see that the county's using 911 funds, $122,000 for their portion that they pay Tell City?
Yes.
So that, that feels like a double dip, that feels like that's, you know, why is that happening? Because that's my money too. Because I'm a Tell City resident that pays that on my cell phone bill, so I don't think that's fair. I think that should come off the top.
Well, this has been a discussion in years past, and for some reason, this just kind of crept up on this wheel. That's the way I see it. It's just kind of like they're sewer drains, you know, they, they were in the world for years, and all of a sudden you have to do something about it. This is something we got to do something about.
This crept up, and I can, and I can tell you exactly why. Five years ago, there was an agreement to do these interlocal agreements, and it was at the end of the five years, we, it's time to sit down and start talking about it. So I mean, I'm thankful that it was, they, someone set a timeframe rather than just let it go. And it has happened to be the five years. So, five years before they had these discussions, and that's how they came up with the interlocal agreements and those numbers. And so we're at the end of that five-year mark, and it's budget time, and it's a perfect time to do it, actually. Because if we would come to the council in October, after they've already done their budgeting, it wouldn't have been smart, so.
I know, you know, you're, you're being fair by the percentages, but, and I don't know what Troy gets as an annual, you know, what they, what they generate. I know Kennelton, being on Kennelton council, I don't know where 55,000 dollars is going to come from for Kennelton.
Well, the past 30 years, it's been coming out of the City of Tell City's budget. That's the problem. And that's where we're trying to make that fair, and, and nothing against Kennelton. We agree that these costs are absorbent. I mean, for, for all of them, it's like, my goodness, that, how much are we going to come up with? Well, along Tell City's been coming up with it. We have been doing with less, you know, when you people ask about our parks, why they don't have improvements? Why our sidewalks are in terrible shape? Why is the city doing about this? Why are they doing about that? Why don't we have a full-time parks director? This is why. This is why. I hate to be so negative, but it just upsets me that this has went on as long as it has. And I'm very confident, 100%, and I'm very thankful, we have a very, both good city and county council and commissioners that's going to work together to find a solution. I, I am so blessed, to be honest with you, that we, we have that. Because not a lot of communities have that, where they all work together. And Perry County does. And I, I'm confident, we will all work together and find a solution. At the end of the day, we'll all walk away winners, in essence. John?
Mayor, also Kelly's question there on how much we have in that fund. I don't know if you have the green sheet, but it does show that it's planned to use $100,000 of that this year.
It would be the county, not us, but I don't know what the.
Yeah, that'd be a director, email director, Steve Howser question, and he is unable to be here, so we can ask you, we can get that answer for you.
And he may have that committed for an upgrade on some equipment that needs it. You know, I don't know what the repeaters and all that costs are, like 50,000, I think, but.
That plus future costs of purchases and such, equipment, personnel, radios, etc. And if you're going to use that, I said, yes, and then how much, $100,000? So once you use that $100,000, basically down to $50,000 in that, in that fund.
Yeah, that 90, that 90-10 split.
I think we're getting in the lead there.
Yeah.
Because that excess, that excess, like we talked about, we're going to come to an agreement of, how much do you build up there?
First step is this, the, this, and then that second. Pooter had a question while ago, and I don't want to ignore you, I'm sorry, sir.
I was just asking, what's the timeline on this? I mean.
We want to have this resolved in 30 days.
30 days, so.
Because if we keep kicking the can down the street, it's never going to get solved. So I know 30 days is a bold timeline.
You mean for an agreement?
An agreement, not to find the funding. No, an agreement that we can all get, yeah, I guess I should re, sorry, Luke, I had a stroke over here.
He wasn't the only one.
No, 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 but I, because we need to have an agreement in place for starting 2022. So when we're starting signing interlocal agreements on January 1st, this has got to be resolved. So that's why we need to have something together, so when Troy and Kennelton and Tell City and the counties all doing our budgets, we know what to budget where. Because right now, we're just kind of like, where do we go? So. Any other public questions?
I have more. So the 50,000 that you estimated here for the Tell City admin?
Yes.
You were talking about like whether it's salaries or whatever, but that doesn't include benefits, insurance, pension, or portion of any of that.
That, well, that was kind of all rolled into it, right. 50's, it's a small number, and it could, but it's, it's, it's there. That was something that we felt we needed to add to it. We can actually, Roger could probably estimate his time and hours, and we could probably figure stuff up based on payroll and benefits and kind of get a more concrete number. It would take some time. Connie, I know you could probably compute it real well, but.
Not without a calculator.
Not without a calculator, not in your head. But we could, we could sharpen that and make that accurate, and I think that would be the fair thing to do to the county council and everybody else involved, in my opinion. You know, not just pull a number out of our, out of their, our head, so. Yeah. Any other public comments? Speak now, if everybody's a piece. Alright, Luke, you want to, I'll let you drive for a second, and you want to?
Well, I have, I have nothing else at this time. Like I said, the council, county council meets Thursday at 5 o'clock, Commissioner's Room. We'll hopefully appoint some representatives to begin engaging the city with actual discussions to get this solved. But I don't have anything else at this time.
Okay. Well, on the council, city council side, if there's nothing else to bring before, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Larry, or a second? Seconded by Gary. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Meeting's set to adjourn. Luke's got to do his, hang on, everyone.
Do you have a motion to adjourn from the county council? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Question category 70.